Should fall upon us. You ready? The common council of the city of Glendale is now in session. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Vukovich.
Here.
Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Galhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmelzling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Public comment, Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Consent agenda has just two items, the minutes for our last meeting and our monthly reports to be placed on file. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Oh, move.
Move by Alderman Doherty, is there a second? Second by Alderman Schmelzling. Any discussion without objection? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank staff. I saw the reports are a little more detailed this time, and it was interesting to read about like safe built metrics and things like that. So thank you for getting it out there for us.
Thank you. Any other commentary? Questions? All right, we'll consider the consent agenda adopted without any objections, and we will move on to new business. The first item on new business tonight is a review of the North Shore Court uncollectible debts, and we will invite the judge and clerk to come up and join us. Good evening. So whoever is speaking, if you just remember to move the microphone and talk directly into it, if the little red light on there isn't lighting up, then the folks, then Alderman Galhard can't hear you. He's the only one joining us online, so.
Do you mind if I just provide a quick introduction? So several months ago, the common council approved a resolution authorizing outstanding debt to be eliminated by the municipal court. So I asked Mary and the judge to come here and just provide a quick overview of the progress of the debt and the records.
Good evening.
So I put together just a quick synopsis from the time that we talked in July of last year. I ran records up through June of 2018, which is 2018 is what I'm required to keep for five years as of last year. I actually purged 53,430 records that were cases closed. So those cases are now finished with the municipal court completely. I no longer have access to those records. Then I moved on to the question at hand of how much debt has been written off to date. For a total of 1,149 cases, a total debt balance of $4,4,504.86.
Sorry, you need to speak back into the microphone.
As you know, we had an outstanding balance of around $5 million. I did do the spreadsheet for Carl as he had requested. We are currently at $4,578,380.14 as of today's date in outstanding. So even though it's lower, what everybody needs to realize is this is continually revolving. So we're continually putting more debt in, even though there will be debt written off and there will be debt collected. So that being said, I did inform Carl something that I also want to share with you, that if there is any partial payment on any outstanding debt, that debt is maintained in my system for seven years and not written off. So if six and a half years ago, we received a dime in somebody's name, we keep that debt for seven years. So that outstanding debt will not be reduced quickly in your eyes. It will only be those records that we're actually able to reduce.
Thank you. Any questions? Alderman Doherty?
It was a very positive step, so congrats on fighting through that.
Other questions or comments? Judge, do you have anything you wanted to add or just here for moral support? You got a fantastic clerk, so she's done a great job.
Everything she does is at my direction. There was something I had to say. Why did I do?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I applaud the efforts to be like realistic about it. Like, I think that's, it's just going to make less work in the long run, but at the same time, do what we can to still collect what we can. So, thank you.
If I could add one thing, it is amazing when you go through the court clerk's office, there is like five boxes in there full of records. The rest of it is stored electronically and nowhere else. So it's a very impressive record storage system that she has over there.
Oh. Congratulations on that as well. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you both. Appreciate it. Okay, the item 4B is the resolution recognizing February 2024 as Black History Month in the city of Glendale. And I believe Alderwoman Vukovich has invited some folks to come and to share with us some of their research and work.
So again, thank you. This is a wonderful Black History Month. I am so proud of it and happy that we can celebrate. We have asked the students from Glen Hills Middle School to do, they're doing some presentations. I'm just going to move. And then they will come, they need to do.
Base the audience, yeah, that's fine.
I don't know.
We do have a resolution then that recognizes February 2024 as Black History Month in the city of Glendale. Can I get a motion then to adopt the resolution, please?
So move.
Move by Alderman Doherty, is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Vukovich, any discussion? All right, before we vote, I want to say a thank you to our students from Glen Hills. Fantastic performance tonight. Really appreciate the time and thought that you put into your presentations. Thank you. Okay, can we get a motion, or sorry, have a motion, all those in favor of approving the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries, resolution is adopted. Thank you. What? Oh, yeah, that's fine. We do have a, we have a lot of stuff ahead of us. If you want to sit through a boring city council meeting, you are welcome to. Otherwise, you're also welcome to go, so thank you. Right, no, I appreciate that.
Oh, it is riveting, riveting stuff we're about to do.
Bond issues and everything.
All right. We will now move on to our next item on the agenda, which is a parameters resolution for the issuance of bonds, issuance of debt, and I will turn it over to the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Before the council tonight is an ordinance or resolution, excuse me, for the parameters to borrow $4.82 million to pay the city for the 2023 capital improvements. The principle is listed in the resolution year by year. It's essentially a 10-year term to pay back this borrowing for $4.8 million. They are listed in there up to 2034. We have an anticipated interest rate, but the exact payment schedule will not be determined until the closing of this note. Bradley is here from Barrett, if you have any questions for that.
All right, thank you. I'll open up the House member, council, any? Representative here?
Only question I have is, I know historically in the last couple of years, we, we got our bonds through, I think, a different organization.
State.
We ordered a state, right. How does this compare to those interest rates right now?
That I'll turn over to the smarter person in the room on that than me.
All right, thank you.
Brad, we go to Barrett, so you need to make sure that we speak.
I'll clean up the mic. Perfect.
Interest rate on the state program is 6.25% or 6%. I think it may have just dropped. The projected interest rate here is below 4.5%. It'll probably be a little bit lower, so an open market note issue right now is a lower cost option for the city.
Perfect, that's what I'd expect, thank you.
Other questions? All right, so the parameters are laid out in the resolution. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
So move.
Move by Alderman Bailey, is there a second? Second by Alderman Doherty, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the resolution that authorizes the issuance of the $4.82 million in general obligation promissory notes, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carry. Thank you, Brad, appreciate it. All right, next item is approval for travel for Detective Crenn to attend the National Computer Forensics Institute. I'm assuming this is the chief.
Yes, thank you. Officer Crenn is our primary digital forensic investigator, and his name was forwarded by, I think it was someone from the Secret Service to have the opportunity to attend the device examiner court. to have the opportunity to attend the law, uh, device examiner course, uh, being held in Hoover, Alabama. Uh, I'm not sure exactly when the people will be selected to attend. But if he is selected to attend, uh, he would go on either July eighth through the twenty-fifth or August twenty-sixth through the September twelfth. Uh, the National Computer Forensic Institute pays for everything involved in this. It's no cost at all to the city. Um, and if he successfully completes it, which I would assume, um, that any equipment that he might get we're, if you remember, we're a part of the Greenfield Forensic Lab. Um, so if the forensic lab doesn't have that equipment, they would get it. If the, if the forensic lab already has some of that equipment, we would get it. So it's a, so really, it's a win-win situation. No cost to the city at all.
Any questions from? All right, can we get a motion then to approve the travel for Detective Crenn?
So moved.
Move Alderman Doherty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Valderman Schmelzling. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Carries. Uh, next item is the approval of the spring newsletter, and I know Carl sent out a revised newsletter this afternoon to us.
Oh, yeah, that's all I have. The, uh, the newsletter is in there for your consideration. Revised, um, newsletter was sent out earlier today after, uh, Alderman Schmelzling and I discussed, uh, some of his suggested revisions.
What timeline for printing and going in the mail? What's the print night?
So, um, the mailing list was, um, produced by the printer or the mailhouse today, and then we have to cut the check and then hopefully, um, after that, it's like a week or so. Um, so it should go out the beginning of March, like the first week of March.
I just noticed sort of some timely issues in there, so wanted to find out when they would be out.
Yeah, it's usually just a matter of like how long it takes to like that process of cutting the check and then going back and forth. So I would say maybe like a week, like from today, like probably won't be this week, but hopefully next week.
Okay. That's the only question I had. Any other questions? Uh, yes, go ahead.
That sometimes it's been some color issues were harder for me to read. This looks great. So hats off.
Any other comments? Okay, can we get a motion then to approve the spring newsletter and authorize the staff to get it printed and mailed?
Moved.
Move bottom and Schmelzling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Valderman Bailey. Um, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. All right, the next item is actually one that I asked to have placed on the agenda. We currently have a vacancy on planning an architecture mission. We have an alternate on the P A R C, and the alternate is unable to attend in both March and April and would be up for renewal in April anyway, and so asked if he could just end his term early. Um, Ray Carlson is, um, a professional engineer, and, um, so he is my recommendation to be placed on as the alternate, essentially attending in May and April would be subject then to reappointment at the April reorganization meeting. So, uh, so I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Ray or, uh, from basically of about two months to finish out the remainder of the term as the alternate, and he actually will be needed as we know there are going to be at least one absence for both March and April of the regular commission members, so. Get a motion to approve the appointment, please.
So moved.
Move Alderman Bailey. Is there a second? Second, Valderman Shaw. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Next item is the agreement, uh, for tourism and marketing with the North Shore Chamber of Commerce and Discover the North Shore, and I will turn it over to Carl.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. I will do my best to summarize some of the major points in this agreement. Uh, the agreement would be effective upon the date of execution or authorization. Uh, there is an expiration date at the end of, um, two thousand twenty-eight, so it is a four-year agreement with both the North Shore Chamber of Commerce and Discover the North Shore. I'll continue now. So this agreement does a number of things. It essentially re-ups the terms for, uh, the North Shore Chamber of Commerce for their marketing services that they perform for the city, primarily for our events during the year. Um, and it also provides them a ten percent, um, capture back for all the fundraising that is done for the events at Mezlovsky Park and Fourth of July. Those are all consistent with the agreement that was previously established. And Becca from the Chamber and Discover the North Shore, and I'm gonna accidentally say welcome to Glendale a hundred times, so I apologize for that. Um, she's here too, if you have any questions about the agreement. Um, the agreement also includes a one-time payment to the North Shore Chamber of Commerce in the amount not to exceed twenty-four eight sixty. Uh, that is for financial auditing services that was not performed by the city, uh, when they were the Bell Area Business Association that the city was required to perform in order for them to maintain their not-for-profit status. This came up a couple of years, uh, actually about a year ago, and everything has been fixed and rectified. Uh, but this is the city's contribution towards making that payment of the services that should have been provided to them several years ago. Uh, so that pretty much covers the North Shore Chamber portion of this agreement. Uh, the other portion is related to, um, Discover the North Shore, the, um, tourism entity. Um, under our, um, under state law, we pay them thirty-five point one seven percent of the funds received from hotel shares. That is a result of the timing of when the tax was implemented, and correct me on some of this, Nathan. Um, if the tax had been created later than that, the city would owe, um, Discover the North Shore approximately se- or exactly seventy percent of the hotel tax dollars received. Uh, we're, we're essentially grandfathered into the lower percentage that was established, um, because of when we were established. Uh, so that payment schedule essentially continues here. Uh, we are proposing to have those payments be paid quarterly like they are now. However, they would be paid a little sooner and based on the previous year's revenue, you take the previous year's revenue, so it's four hundred thousand dollars. You divide it by four and make those equal payments throughout the year, and then that readjusts annually. And whatever the difference is in what was received versus what was received the year before is either received by the city or paid by the city on the first payment, which would be January fifteenth of the following year. Um, recognizing also that, um, Discover the North Shore receives a lower percentage than pretty much the rest of the tourism entities in the states. Um, Becca and I tried to work out a tiered system where we established a base amount of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if you take five percent above the base amount, which is what the tip- the city typically receives in a year, they would receive forty-four point one seven percent of those, um, funds. And then in addition to that, I believe, and sorry, I meant to click on the agreement before, I think it's one point three million dollars and greater. They would receive fifty-four point one seven percent. So, yeah, anything in excess of one point three million dollars, um, under their proposed agreement, they would receive an additional ten percent, so fifty-five point one seven percent. Tried to maintain and enhance what the city receives, but also provide a little greater share of the percentage, um, to discover the North Shore so they can uh, effectively perform the services of tourism, um, like they're required to do. I think, does that summarize the majority of it?
Okay. All right, so, um, we do have now before us an agreement, uh, between the city of Glendale and Discover the North Shore and the North Shore Chamber. Does anybody have any questions from the council? Alderman Schmelzling, go ahead.
Um, I, I just want to, um, in two aspects, one applaud, um, what used to be welcome to Glendale and, and all of that, because I know um, they do hands down a lot more than what we originally had before from, I think, our, um, not necessarily the one just before our vendor, but the prior one, um, so that that goes a ways back. But then as well as I, I do want to just also to reiterate as we do this, um, you know, we still have the hotels here in Glendale, and I'm hoping that's all of these efforts do benefit Glendale as, as best we can, even though I know the full North Shore is also to benefit from our, our hotels. But, uh, that's probably my main comment is I think let's just, uh, and maybe in the future, other Brown Deer could and then this would be equitable compared to them. I'm assuming they would be seventy percent. That's all.
Believe all the hotel top tourism dollars received from Glendale hotels have to be spent in Glendale. They can't be spent in other parts. Is that correct?
Um, they have to be spent on marketing our seven hotels in Glendale, yes. So if we were to market an event that's in the North Shore, we would only direct them to our hotel partners that we have right now. Um, so a lot of other tourism entities will do the same thing we're kind of doing, um, in terms of the Greater Greenfield area. They might partner with a smaller town that's near them and absorb their hotel tax dollars and then promote all the hotels that aren't even in Greenfield, but they kind of take it on as like a partnership. Um, and with this, we're hoping that we bring more, we're already doing so much in Glendale that the reason why our board really decided this is because one, it aligns with the North Shore Chamber. Uh, we were getting a lot of businesses that were confused when we were like, we're the North Shore Chamber and welcome to Glendale. And they're like, well, we're not located in Glendale. Um, so it helps with that, but mainly it helps with being able to provide more attractions and more things for people to stay in our hotels for. So if you go on our Discover the North Shore M K E dot com website, you'll actually see that we only have Glendale hotels on there and it only promotes the Glendale hotels. So even though there are four others in Brown Deer and we might promote the bro- the Brown Deer Pond or something like that as a tourism spot, we're only going to showcase our Glendale hotels attached to that.
That helps. And also, we obviously get a cut of that hotel revenue as well as through the city coffers on the, the general fund. So, uh, that helps kind of piece it together on how it finds its way back to Glendale. Thank you.
And I will, can I make a comment? Okay, I will make a comment that, um, going through with our old attorney, John Fuchs, and once we realized all of this with the tax money, um, he was like, it'd be way easier to just let that go and create your own name. That was more aligned. It wasn't Glendale Convention Visitors Business Association Incorporated. That was a non-stop corporation under the city of Glendale. But if we did that, it would have in turn kind of, um, forced Glendale's hand to pay us then that seventy percent, because then that wouldn't be grandfathered anymore. We have a great relationship with the city and we didn't want to do that. So we could have easily shifted that when this whole tax audit came up and I realized, hey, this wasn't happening. Um, but we decided we really like our partnership. We understand that this is a huge fund as well for the city, and we didn't want to ruin that relationship and we want to continue to just grow. And so if we continue to say that, and so that's why I really appreciate the tiered kind of dues that we came up with is that the city could still maintain what they get. But if we get over that, which we're hoping to continue to provide great hotel stays and tourism and even bring more events to the Glendale area and even the North Shore as a whole, um, if we can get our hotels to get more stays and possibly in the future get another hotel, um, then it can only go up from there and then we benefit and the city benefits. So we really want to create that relationship, but yes, off the record, I would love Brown Deer to join as well, because yes, we would get that seventy percent and then, um, we can promote all the hotels. So if you know anybody, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, now back on the record, if you know anybody.
All right, any other questions? Okay, can we get a motion then to approve the tourism and marketing agreement? Move by Alderman Vukovich. Is there a second? Second, Valderman Shaw. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Becca. Thanks for all that you do as well. Yeah. All right, the next item, item four H is an agreement with SafeBilt for permitting software, and I assume we're turning it over to Mr. Fellows since he is approaching the table.
I mean, so. Um, Carl and I have been working on looking at our software for building permits and other components. Uh, currently we use B S N A. It's a part of our financial software. Uh, they actually have three different versions. We're currently using their oldest version. It does not allow for anyone to apply online. It doesn't allow for all sorts of, uh, more modern type conveniences that other communities are moving towards. Um, and so we started looking at different options. We evaluated a number of, um, common, um, and popular software options. One of them included, uh, Community Core, which is a proprietary software used by SafeBilt. It actually is currently being used here at the city. So we actually have two systems we're using. We use one system where the permits are in- putted in or intaked, and then all of the inspections and everything are actually documented in Community Core. And so, uh, reaching out to SafeBilt, they, uh, provided a, a great opportunity. Um, it, uh, meets our criteria of being able to allow someone to submit online, uh, see the status of their permit, those types of things. It streamlines the functions within the city. So instead of having two systems, we only have one. Um, if a phone call comes in to staff, we'll be able to look up and say, yeah, you had an inspection, you know, um, a couple of days ago and it passed or, or that kind of thing. So we'll be able to provide better communication. Essentially, uh, the way the software works is somebody can submit online if they choose, and then, um, it would, the application will be, be reviewed. Um, once it's been reviewed and determined everything is complete, then they'll get an email back saying they can pay their fee, and then they'd be able to pay their fee, and it would move through the process. Um, and then their permit would be issued, you know, within three to five days, so to speak. Um, so it will smooth things out. I think, um, it will, um, we do a lot of, we have a lot of permits that come in with the wrong fee. There, there's not enough. It, it's short funds. It's over, so we do a lot of reimbursement of, uh, sending people checks back of five and ten and fifty dollars, those types of things. So, because they've calculated it wrong. So hopefully this will smooth, smooth over all of that. Um, the great benefit, I guess, from the city's perspective is, um, there's a one-time fee of five thousand dollars, which would be accomplished this particular year. But going forward, every year going forward, uh, we would not have any additional costs. So we have savings. We currently pay, uh, B S N A fees to use their licensing. That would go away. Um, and as long as we have SafeBilt as the, uh, inspection, uh, company, then that would remain, um, uh, at zero. If for some reason we decided not to use, uh, community or, or SafeBilt as our inspection service, but kept Community Core, um, then it's a little over four thousand, I think, a year, um, which is just a little bit more than what, uh, we're currently paying, um, would be that, that, uh, price. So we're essentially getting, after this year, we're getting a, uh, we, we'd have in twenty-five and twenty-six, we'd actually, um, you know, be saving quite a bit.
Buy it once, and we don't have to pay to use it every year like so many of these other software.
Yeah, every other software you may have to pay a annual fee. So usually the other ones, you have to have a, a fee to transfer the data over. You have to pay an annual fee. You might actually have fees per users. Some of them actually have, um, a fee per every permit that comes in. So you, you would actually have to, you know, it's like, I don't know, three bucks or whatever. At every permit, they're getting money for every permit that comes in. So it's a lot more complicated. This is a very straightforward opportunity.
And this didn't make the, oh, sorry, the, um, the packet, but John completed a, um, Excel chart that examined all the twelve um, companies that were looked at in software platforms and probably examined about fifteen different aspects of it. So it was a very detailed, very, you know, process-oriented chart that I'll commend John for the time that he spent putting this together. And I, we made, or I feel that we were presenting the, the most beneficial software package out there.
And it sounds like a lot of things very positive about this. I guess I would challenge us to say to the city attorney or be involved in making sure that the data that goes in this system is ultimately ours. So if we ultimately leave and go somewhere, we have a right to keep our data. Because a lot of times, if you just take the standard software agreement, you'll either pay them more later or it's not available and you can't leave. And we're going to proprietary systems, so that has a downside. The costs look very beneficial. But I would want to make sure that the data remains our data and a right to get to it.
I think it does, but it will, that's a good point, and we'll double check it before.
I've been burned in my life on this before, so it's, it's one of those things. If you do it before you sign on the deal, it's not usually that big a deal. But if you try to negotiate this later, you may have a really tough time.
Yeah, that's a very good point, and I know Nathan had looked at the agreement beforehand, so he's looking at it right now. But if you want to make a contingent upon final attorney review, that will allow us to.
And Jeff? Okay.
Yeah, I had the same question, so I looked at the contract, and, um, if, just for everyone's reference, and please double check me here, but, uh, it would be free to give us in their proprietary format, so they would give it to us in that format, then we'd probably have to pay some vendor to migrate it. Um, or we'd have to pay them to export it into whatever format we wanted. So we do have access to the data. It's just a, you know.
Maybe we should ask to have it in, uh, to limited, you know.
Yeah, some kind of standard.
Something that we could do to take to Excel or something, so we could do something different.
That, that's all.
I'm limited or whatever.
Yeah, some kind of non-proprietary format.
Yeah. All right, Alderman Shaw.
Mr. Fellows, you indicate that there's only a, uh, cost upfront for setup and data transfer, and there's no additional cost afterwards. My question is, what about software upgrades? Are there going to be costs for maintaining somewhere down the road?
This is a software that they use across the country that's actually for their own, um, company. So they actually see this as a benefit to themselves, because right now they have to pay someone to actually get it out of our system and put it into their system. So they're gonna have a savings on that, so. they're going to have a savings on that. So they were actually quite pleased that, um, we wouldn't be using B S A or some other, other, um, product, because that same transfer thing would have to happen. So, um, yeah, there would be no additional cost going forward after the initial one.
Yeah, they use this software every day and all of their clients across the country. So this actually saves them money. Cause right now, when somebody has a permit, we put it in B S N A, they tack that data and they have to manually put it in their program. Now they're getting it already put in there.
It can be up to three, five days. So the it's their permit to the city. It's approved. They've paid for it or not, it's approved, but it's, um, it's okayed and it's paid for. It can, there's a lag to get into their system before somebody can even call for an inspection. So for some homeowners, for instance, we've had, um, homeowners who have emergency issues like their dishwasher overflows over the weekend. So they have somebody come in, fix it. They come in on Monday or Tuesday to get that permit. They want to get the inspection and just get done. It actually can take three to five days. They almost have to wait another week before they can even call in. This way it's going to be in the system. So theoretically they're, we're going to take days to maybe a day to be able to, um, be able to provide them that service.
Saving them money. Should we ask them for twenty-five hundred?
Hold on, Joanne.
I understand what you're saying about the turnaround time for permitting, but I'm wondering, you know, you're all saying it's being utilized by the company. I just somewhere down the road, software upgrades cost money. So I have a feeling it's going to come down, you know, where, when they have to do.
It's an, it's a cloud-based software. So basically when they push the upgrade to all of their people, it, it pushes the upgrade to us. They wouldn't be, they would not be managing two different systems.
Amendment states that we software program at all, us, we don't are building.
For all the a question about cost, they actually start off to ten thousand and we've got start off at ten thousand. We negotiated down to five. I don't know if I can squeeze more out.
Just want to make sure there's some squeeze.
There was squeeze.
You brought all the bloody could get out of the stone. Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Can we get a motion then to claim it was Safebuilt for the permitting software, please?
Oh, moved.
Move Alderman Bailey, is there a second?
Second, but we're going to allow the attorney to have a chance to make sure we.
Second, Bald woman majority, and then, um, city attorney?
Yeah, there was a, I was going to mention that anyway, because there was a provision of the liability section that I wanted to part, to partially delete anyway. So just going to ask him on that and we'll follow him.
So, um, I guess the question is we have a motion and a second to approve this agreement. Do we allow for if the attorney wants to strike something, not add anything to it, but if his attorney wants to strike anything from the agreement? That we would permit that for me to, permit me to sign it still.
We're also permitting to add, right? In the sense of if we could get non-proprietary use of the data coming out of their system if we ever leave and we want it.
But if, if you just say subject to, uh, attorney review, yeah, yeah, review and approval. Um, if there's a problem, I'll just bring it back to you.
Okay.
If there's anything that would not be more favorable to the city that we can't get, we'll just, you know, we'll bring it back to you.
Basically, it's either this agreement or something you might get that is better for the city, but any, okay. All right. So we're all clear. That's the motion and second.
Basically, the motion includes with the caveat of a attorney approval.
Right. Okay. So it's been moved to approve the agreement subject to attorney approval and it's been seconded. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, aye?
No.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. All right. That concludes all of our new business. We now have commission committee, board and staff reports.
We have one more item if you're on.
Oh, the. Yep, you're right. Recommendation from the, uh, legislative judiciary committee for a change agent for Aldi number forty-two. Sorry about that. Is this a clerk or do I turn it over to?
The question that the, the committee brings forward is to approve to so that I, that's the motion.
Okay. So it's been moved by Alderwoman Shaw.
Actually, it was moved by L and J commit.
Yeah, but you're bringing it forward. So is there a second then for that motion? Second, Bald woman Bukovich, any further discussion? Okay, mo, then all in favor of approving the change agent for Aldis, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Aries, now we're done. Move on to commission committee, board and staff reports. I'll start with the city administrator. I have nothing tonight. Thank you. City attorney?
The, uh, few, few months back.
There we go.
Few months back, the state legislature made some pretty sweeping changes to chapter one twenty-five, which regulates alcohol and liquor licenses and things like that. So I'm actually working on, um, um, sort of a, the chart, flow chart and, uh, summary that we can share with a share with the clerks of the communities that we serve so that, um, uh, we can make sure we're keeping up with all the changes because it's sort of a they staggered the rollout. Some things will be taking place in twenty twenty-four and then some later in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. So we'll just, uh, be looking to stay on top of that.
Thank you. City clerk? Uh, chief? Alderman Bukovich? Alderman Doherty?
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Galhard?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Bailey?
Nothing.
Alderman Schmelzling?
Nothing here.
Alderman Shaw? All right. And I just have one quick thing. This morning at the M M S D meeting, uh, the commission, they did a year in review on the private property inflow and infiltration program. Um, we are one of the nine municipalities that has received funds from this. So I have a report if anyone wants to look at it. That big project that's going to happen in Clovernook, that's actually being paid for almost nine hundred thousand dollars from this particular fund. So this is, uh, actually a really effective fund. And in the city of Milwaukee, I'll start it down this way first. In the city of Milwaukee, um, it was a major recipient of the funds. And they're actually utilizing it to do a lot of sanitary lateral replacements. At the same time, they're going in to do lead service line lateral. So freshwater coming in through lead pipes are removing the lead pipes. And they're also, because they're digging in the trench at the same place, they're going to replace the sanitary ladders at the same time. There's a lot of that going across, across the city of Milwaukee. And, uh, most of this is from, um, is coming in from federal grants and federal funds. So it's, uh, our tax money being spent for, um, not only in the city of Milwaukee example I gave, but also in the city of Glendale where we are one of the major recipients of the five million dollars for the suburban communities. We're getting almost a million of it this year. So so I'll pass that around. And that concludes my reports. And, uh, so now we are, uh, noticed to go into closed session uh, for several items. One is an update on our Glen, uh, the We Energies and Public Service Commission complaint. Uh, and then also discussion of, uh, property owned by the village of Fox Point in the city of Glendale for possible sale. And then, um, administrative position, wage range and compensation. Um, do you anticipate any action on any closed item, closed session items?
There will be no action coming out of closed session.
We know it. Okay. So item eight on our agenda is moot. There won't be any item on closed, um, session agenda items. So, uh, can I get a motion now to convene in closed session subject to the statute indicated on our agenda?
Oh, moved.
Move Alderman Doherty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmelzling. All those in favor of convening in closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Close. We are now in closed session. And, um, Megan, I know you're going to stop the recording. Uh, but John will stay on. There's nobody else. So we don't have to move anybody into the waiting room. Okay, perfect.